Thank you very much. Just for your information, anyone who's meeting the views of freshmen, go through this door here. Rice to the women. Thank you so much. Okay? Thank you for coming out this evening. Everyone still driving. I believe in the supply to the United States of America. To the public, to the stands, by nation, on our ground, in this world, with the freedom of trust. You may continue on your time. Thank you for your seat. I just have a little hall. Alden Anderson, here. Alden. Here. Alden Scott Chivers. Here. Alden Dawson. Austin, I believe she's not. Alden Carey, here. Alden Davis. Here. Alden Nelson. I'm here, but I don't have my phone. Alden Chavis. Here. Alden Bragg. Here. Please, please, here. And I also expect with the minutes of the previous meeting and to the same motion. Second. All favor. All right. Abol. Resolution adopted. Eight zero. I think most expects with the previous town bills. Record. All favor. All right. Abol. Adopted eight zero. We're now moving to the public's meeting for some meetings. Just for the record, please address your comments to the chair. If anybody will Alden can not meet with you, please give your name and address for the record. Thank you very much. And we have set aside a thirty minute long conference, so hopefully we can make sixteen speakers. So try to keep within two or three minutes each. We would appreciate it. Thank you very much. First speaker, please.
Emily Quinn. It's on, there's something on there.
Can you give us a couple of names?
Good evening. My name is Emily Quinn. Emily, that's me, private terrorist in the state. First, I would like to thank the rules and laws of the meeting, the in-depth conversation at this meeting. Thank you for your hard work on this crucial subject. Thanks to our great service from the community, and great service. Secondly, I would like to urge the common council to support the village shooting range legislation based on the city of Rochester model. Well, I think it's local law six, two thousand and sixteen. This law is well researched and includes all the details on what we need to do. I would like all the required certifications and qualifications listed in the place and not assume that they are part of my scheme or the law. Especially like this law was not created for single people's business, but this is clear separate permits for other people's shooting ranges in the future. Thanks for that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Steve Jacobs.
Good evening, Mr. President. I have yourself the common counsel up here in attendance this evening. Tonight, I'll agree, but I'm going to speak to two issues. So that brings me to the podium this evening, angry and grateful. I'm angry, and I'm going to speak to the simple. I live at one thirty-nine Wall Street, and my name is Steve Jacobs. I have lived there for twenty-one years. I have watched Wall Street two houses up for the last five years. We are very fortunate, ladies and gentlemen, that we did not have a fatality on Wall Street, Lindman Avenue, or quite frankly, throughout the city, because detours and the road making was different. School zones, children started in first grade, and now they're in fifth grade. They were acclimated to do, to know that there were stop signs there and the crossing. Okay? Tractor trailers almost took my home down twice on Wall Street due to the impots and the detour signs. We all know that. I don't have to go over that reference with you. But quite frankly, I'm all about public education. I was the school board president. I was director of medical education at Benedict Dean Hospital. So my forte, as always, then, will continue to be education. Quality of life, safety, and the environment. I had a deer on my front lawn the other morning eating grass. The fact is, the closure of Wall Street, or the closure of Washington Avenue to the same zone, has altered the entire environment and also the general public. I still stop. There's no stop sign. I'm not sure if all of you realize the impact that this has caused, but I urge all of you to do your homework and understand those signs must be returned. Between St. James and Franklin, it is a speedway. Remember, from St. James up to St. Joe's is one way, and from Franklin to George Washington School is one way. So that portion is a speedway, even without the stop signs or even with them, it remains the same. Traffic increased threefold. It was the emergency group for ambulance, fire truck, and police. We were living a nightmare, and I understand, and I'm complaining, I'm very happy that it has been fixed and we're moving on. But the environment, Nate Horowitz, your former alderman, put an alert out on Facebook the other evening. There were coyotes in the neighborhood. This is very serious, ladies and gentlemen. So I urge my aldermen and all of you to take a serious look at returning those signs to Wall Street. Thank you on that. Secondarily, I'm here grateful because I had the opportunity to serve my public. Let me begin this by saying, I was the ethics chairman in the city of Kingston, and I am publicly thanking all my ethics board members. They were the most incredible and wonderful people that I could ever have the privilege of working with. But I do not speak on their behalf this evening. I speak on my behalf as a resident and a taxpayer, and the very fact that the ethics law protects the public trust. Violating the public trust is a very serious matter. So I'm going to speak to a few areas that date back. Back in July tenth of two thousand and thirteen, the city of Kingston local law two, two thousand and thirteen, was filed on July eighth with the Department of State. Because the state demanded and sent down the order for an ethics law to be established. We all know, before I end this, I'll agree, as you know that, that in fact, we had our job to do. So virtually, on the twenty-third of two thousand and thirteen, the county council voted the ethics law into the law. And that's the law that all of you have been working with, and that's the law that I had to work with. That law was amended in February of two thousand and fifteen because you had to amend the disclosure forms, and you wanted a different form. Therefore, that was amended. Up until now, you're still dealing with the same law that was created in July of two thousand and thirteen. Therefore, the reason for bringing this important issue to your attention this evening is we need to protect the public trust. The law dictates that. The disclosure forms are critical. And as I end this this evening, I just want to read an excerpt. "We recognize that ethics reform would not be under discussion where it's not meant for the arrest of a separate speaker, shell of its own." We all know that. We all have to change our habits. We have to change the way we think, the way we live as it relates to ethics within the cities, and within towns, and within hamlets. So I urge all of you tonight to look at this. I don't want to think it's going to have an overhaul, or we're not going to have a committee within the city. That would tremendously, I would be angry by that because we deserve to have it as citizens and as taxpayers. So I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary Harvey. Evening. Hillary Harvey, any other deals to you, Kingston? Why have many concerns about the shooting range and gunshot proposal? A big concern of mine is that I'll favor it. Are we abandoning the Kingston firearms law to benefit a single business? If we do rewrite this new law, it should be carefully considered, fully researched, and given time, thorough, and transparent process. But rewriting laws is a big deal. It could change the city's culture, standard current and future regulation efforts, and affect our neighborhoods and to our community here. There are a couple of issues right now which highlight an opportunity for us to show that the city of Kingston does not draw any results to its special interests. Quarters of the shooting range and gunshot say respect for the owner have major driving force for their support, but we should not rewrite the new laws to remedy poor empty thoughts. This is the same situation with the Irish Cultural Center proposal for Hill Street. Project needs city officials to re-district property. We'll be asking the common council to revise zoning codes that protect the quality of life and historic charm of the long-out neighborhood in order to allow for the access to film and photography. Rather than rewriting laws and zoning codes to make our neighborhoods fit special interest development projects, let's make development projects that favor neighborhoods. Development with safer development lacks forethought, and a lack of scope of forethought will actually discourage and disrupt our business. Changes are made in these key ways. They need to be done with careful considerations of the effects it will have on our entire Kingston community. A quick fix now will create issues for us to contend with later. So we need to think about the legacy we want to leave for future generations. So I support the council in bringing forth the Rochester model when it comes to the issue of the amendment to Kingston firearms law. It's important to create buffer for areas where residents, families, and visitors live or can play. I want to thank you for your hard work and taking time with this and weighing the research rather than giving weight to favoritism. Thank you for your contribution. Jenny Snyder.
My name is Jenny Snyder. I live in forty-five Jefferson Avenue. Thank you for your hard work. I'm here to support what I have been informed is now local law five coming forward to be discussed and voted in the talk. All the reasons that I support Rochester amendment are outlined very succinctly and much more articulately than I can by the Ulster County Human Rights Commission letter to the mayor and the council, I assume dated the sixteenth, and signed by Joanne Myers of the Human Rights Commission of Ulster County. She out, I'm just going to outline the points she makes and enter that as my testimony. She mentions that the city of Kingston has a comprehensive core commercial corridor in Midtown that has been designated as an arts district. And commercial residents, as well as its city, as its residential area, are hoping to bring people into the community for the purposes of Kingston and enjoying the cultural life of the city. The second point, of course, is location. The proximity to the high school, the YMCA, the Kingston Midtown Unity Center, as well as commercial venues that are frequented by a great deal of in-and-out traffic, including the Rite Aid Pharmacy, the Monkey Joe's Coffee Shop, and various eating establishments on the north side of Broadway, would be, I think, endangered, frankly, by the proximity to a venue that sells firearms. Makes no sense to me. Third, she mentions leather. Fourth, and I'd just like to read this because I couldn't say it any better. And I was at a meeting last May when certain language was used to describe the parking lot at YMCA, of which I am also a member, which I am equally offensive and troublesome personally. We are further concerned that a certain contentious, oh, I'm sorry. We are concerned that the language used by some of those who support this range. They describe Midtown residents as people from whom we may need protection. The purpose of a shooting range and a gun shop is not to protect individuals from their neighbors. And finally, she says, "We are further concerned that a certain contentious understanding of property rights, that I have the right to develop my property as I please, might trump the political voice of local residents and business owners and the concept of the public." Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Mars. Good evening. I'm Elaine Mars. I live in forty-five Jefferson Avenue in Kingston. I'm pretty much a newcomer to Kingston. I came back to New York after living most of my life in California. And anyway, I've been trying to educate myself about the local political process, governmental issues. And quite frankly, the place that saw shooting range proposal, it just doesn't make sense to me to consider the location. You know, there are daycare centers, there's a youth and high school, that park, there's a hospital, there's a YMCA, there's senior citizens though. And to try to enact a law to accommodate one property owner, I think that, again, the main issue should be health and safety of the residents and the quality of life. Nothing can guarantee that toxic emissions from the post-shooting range will be mitigated by proper ventilation and soundproofing and all of that. I mean, I've been one of the next to the shooting range, I mean, the property owner belongs to either. Seems to me that sells property and, you know, like another property outside the city limits, which is more appropriate, but it's sparsely populated. So I strongly feel that local law five should, local law makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Casey Wimish.
Hi, this is Kate. My name is Casey Wimish. I live at one forty-three Henry Street. I'm also an employee at the YMCA. Spend a lot of time walking and biking down the Broadway corridor. I would like to express my support of the local law in regards to the shooting range that's based on the Rochester model. It's a well researched, well embedded law, and it really does seek to protect the common good and the public health of the community, which I think needs to be the number one priority. Thank you.
Matt Palangio.
Hello. My name is Matt Palangio. I'm a recent citizen of Montblaine Street. And I think there's two important issues that we have. I think, but really the question of how we govern is maybe the answer. We have to ask ourselves, are we governing or dictating? If you look at the law that is proposed, it's well intended, but is it governing or is it dictating? You know, this law has so many restrictions. And you have to ask yourself, when is it stopping? Is it just going to have a gun code? What do we have to have with all of our laws to say they can or can't be? How many employees should there be or shouldn't there be? What time they should open, what time they should close? How much they should spend, how much they shouldn't spend? Maybe we do that for ourselves, but vertically as a government. Government should be telling the private business what to do. That's not governing, that's dictating. And a lot of the concern that you mentioned are concerned. It's hard for me to understand how a home breth somebody can say that a shooting range is dangerous for our children because it's close to the school, it's close to the YMCA, it's close to the daycare. Because I think that's just near minded. And I say that because if these same people are concerned for our children because of the location of the shooting range, then shouldn't we go and revise the laws for convenience or? There's four next to daycares, next to hospitals, next to, you know, they sell cigarettes, alcohol. I don't, that's pretty bad for our kids. But those same people aren't advocating, Matt said they're advocating because there's a gun inside a building called Safe Shoot. That's some power that's going to create a safety issue. There's so many other things that are directly affecting us that are really, that are actually happening. Governing out of fear, out of maybe this will happen. You know, I think that Broadway is an excellent arts community, but I think they've become too creative. They convince us of Dr. Sawyer's opening, the opening apartment. It's not happening. The second issue that we have to ask ourselves is the sales tax. And I know I've been very vocal about it because it's not necessarily about why don't us want it or they want it or. It's about the process that was placed in front of you unfairly. I mean, the city's done a great job, mayor's done a great job, council's done a great job. What is more than just saying, let's suck it out of the game? It's an opportunity for us to conduct, it's an opportunity for us to say, you know what, we're going to be fiscally responsible. Do we believe, or are we going to say, wait a minute, this deal doesn't make sense because we have to, instead of operating on the assumption that it'll be okay, and that we'll suck it out in five years from now, we'll be in a better position? That's not fiscal responsibility, that's not education, that's not helping our children, that's not helping our future, that's not helping us today, five years from now? No. We should be leading by fiscal responsibility. You know, imagine you operated in thought process like you would a citizen in this community. Just instead of the idea of what we have in front of you, think about it in perspective, this is called a citizen in our community, correct? How they monitor their money. Because often times, government doesn't think about tomorrow, they think about today. But a citizen in our community that's struggling, they think about their finances every day. How are they going to pay their people by the time tomorrow? Or whether they're going to have money for groceries, those are decisions that they make. And those, that same process is what we should be doing. Not saying, well, you know what, it'll be okay, okay, we have a feeling in five years from now we'll be better off. Well, we're not that wrong now. Wages aren't high enough, taxes are, it's a group. Infrastructure's problem, government's in the water. But we're going to suck it up, wait five years to do something about it. We've been kicking it hand down the road for government as well. So why don't we stand up and we be government and say, you know what, we're not okay with this decision. We want to know specifically, what is this going to cost? What do you mean by that? What do you mean by this? Sure, it may not be enforceable or, but how do we govern? We don't. And if it is intent, you have to be enforceable and made it that way. I don't. We will become a community with trails that lead us down an economic future that will not be bright. I will say one more thing. If we're going to change the law, I have one law that we should change. Goes back to my point with the previous, let's change the laws to make this no new project, we locate next to another good judge. Right? I mean, the building got on the foot next across the street. I mean, should we go back and rebuild? We just, my point is, let's make a better decision today than thinking about our future. Thank you.
James Childs. Mr. President, common council members, my name is James Childs. With a sexy magic eye. I stand as a elected official on Kingston City School. Our board met several months ago and unanimously de-sought opposition to this change of this law. Maybe because our constituents were calling us and saying, why are you? I say it relative to this issue. You think that's very important? We're not against second amendment, which a lot of people talked about. We're not against having a fire. That's fine. We're really against the location. And we just feel that because it is such close proximity to our facility, the high school, we get into the YMCA. We just think that we should honor the gun-free law and not have a facility within some hundred feet of our school. Also, not relative to school, I have been on foundation, two or three members, one of the multiple homes, especially got two other families in that rent on, on the street. They have children that play in that area, and they're residents of this area, and they're old students. To me, if you're going to change laws, you should be concerned about those who are in that area and who are living in that area. And they're in our position to this. So I would implore you, common council members, to take into consideration our concern, delve into this, apply your vision. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Laura Share. Good evening. My name is Laura Share. I live in forty-six, Wayne Street, Kingston. I'm not here just as representing Port Seven. I'm actually here representing the Kingston City School District Board of Education. I'd like to thank the members of the common council for considering a revision of the ordinance governing the discharge of weapons in the city of Kingston in advance of considering any specific business proposals. Last week, I sent a letter on behalf of Kingston Board of Education, calling it a large and thorough investigation of the shared with all of you by now. In it, we stated that you have here before you a wonderful opportunity to adopt a comprehensive, well articulated guidelines regarding weapons discharge in the city of Kingston, that take into consideration the concerns of all of our constituents. We're very hopeful that you will receive judiciously to construct and adopt the ordinance that is given this guidance, not just to you, but for the women and men who will serve as all the men and all the women, Kingston in the future. An ordinance that is carefully ordered, an ordinance that addresses the concerns for safety of our all, and it should be no surprise to you that there are several concerns about this. And of course, we wish to take into consideration a non-free school zone. We trust that all of you stand in line and produce an ordinance that takes into consideration all of those concerns. Thank you.
Next speaker, Gilson.
Good evening, Mr. President and common council members. My name is James Childs. I live at 11 Delta Place in Kingston. I speak for myself. I'm also over the number of Kingston City School Board. Mr. Scherer is the resident of the board at Reverend Charles, the vice president of the board, just being representing the full board. I have my own comments I would like to make. I looked today on the Ulster County GIS website and looked at the parcels in the rectangle down by Broadway and Grand Street, Asbrooke Avenue and East O'Rally Street. I didn't enumerate them, but I'm sure there are well more than 20 residents there, 20 residential parcels there. There are, there's a three family house directly across the street from Nineteenth Street, almost every building on Broadway has second floor apartments. There are a row of five or six two family residences on, I forget where's the name of the street, the one, Kansas Street. There's a parcel of a single family residence that affords Dr. Sawyer's property on Grand Street, and there are residents along Asbrooke Avenue. Where also, the property is also within the school zone, approximately 700 feet from the high school property. The school zone is a federally defined area of 1,000 feet from any school, public or private. In my opinion, this is not a second amendment issue. This is an issue of putting a shooting range inside a school zone in a residential neighborhood. I also echo Reverend Charles' comments that school board members are also elected officials. We have the same constituents that you do. Every one of your constituents is also my constituent. School board members are elected as trustees of the school district. Voters are entrusting us with the safety of their children when they're in school. But that's a shared responsibility that we have with common council. We're both responsible for the safety of our children, and there are hundreds of children on the sidewalks in this neighborhood before school and after school. Normally, the school board doesn't step on the prerogatives of the common council, and the common council doesn't step on the prerogatives of the school board. But this is an issue with the safety of our children, and it's a common responsibility that we have. And I ask you to take that into consideration as you discuss what amendments or new regulations or laws you're going to pass to guard the discharge of firearms in the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Mary Ann Donaldson.
Can you hear me? That's a problem. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Donaldson. I live at 6 Elizabeth Street in Kingston, New York. And I'm here basically to talk about the Castle Mount Railroad and a sleazy marshal restraining that has been bringing in quite a bit of money for three years. And some of the things that have really been eating away at me is that, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, I've been reading about the linear park, and I know that it's pretty much a done deal. But, you know, I'm curious, you know, has soil been tested there? A school, there was a park in Midtown years ago where, you know, it was contaminated badly. And I'm sure that that Cornell Street lot is contaminated with the equipment that's been on it for over 30 years now or longer. If so, who's going to, who's going to be responsible to absorb the costs for that planning of that property? It's not cheap. Has the county uncovered that? Or is it going to be the city's responsibility? Another question that comes to my mind is easements. Have all the property owners, I mean, that rail bed has been designated as rail bed. It's grandfathered in, that's where it was intended to be, there's easements in place. To do this linear park and to create a trail running from Cornell Street to Kingston Plaza, it's change of use. Don't you have to go and look for approvals? I mean, why wasn't any of this done? Again, who's going to obtain easements if they have already been sold? And who's going to absorb the cost of that? The other big issue that I'm concerned about is maintaining as part of a sales tax agreement that is going on tonight, which is another story that I'm not too happy with. But from reading that, it's the city of Kingston's responsibility to maintain the trail. Has anyone sat down and actually calculated how much it's going to cost us or the additional staff to clean that area up? Plus patrol officers to make sure that that area is safe as people are utilizing that trail? I'm going to be honest with you, I was going to walk that today just to see what it's all about. I'm curious, has any of you walked it? Would you feel safe walking it in, you know, in some of the desolate areas where the bridges that were going under, tunnels? I just, I think it needs to be given some more consideration. I know for the city, everybody wants green spaces and, yes, they agree. You know, if there's plenty of baby moms on Broadway, or you could create little pocket parks that we have on town. When people come into Kingston and drive through Midtown, it's very, it's coming up, I have to say. It's really is coming up. But we need some green spots, not two blocks away from Broadway. We need it on Broadway. We need cute little pocket parks with benches and, you know, attractive little things. So people when they drive by, they're going to say, oh, this is cute, maybe we should stop there and grab a sandwich and sit in the parking lot. We're not going to see that in linear parks across the way. The other thing, you know, I mean, I had spoken in public hearing with the Carney last month, and actually I did want to stick my comments in record, is that I touched base on a lot of good points. But one of the, one of my big, I don't know, there's endless possibilities for this whole quarter and this linear park. And all you have to do is have a mind of your future. I mean, I was reading the comprehensive plan, which you guys reviewed a few months back, of the 2025, significant comprehensive plan, and it clearly states that, you know, both the trolley and the Castle Mount railroad are going to meet attractions in the region and help to draw tourists to the communities. I don't get it. It's part of the comprehensive plan, but yet you're letting it go. I just don't understand. You know, and one of my ideas, you know, keeping in this theory of comprehensive plan, instead of eliminating the tracks of the Cornell Street lot, the quarter is a small park with a rail hub station connecting uptown with both a rail and possibly a trail, providing choices and equal opportunities and access to all users. And this kind of explains why I'm really pushing for that. So I do, I don't want to take up too much time here. The rail station hub could also provide tourists with global attractions, similar to like the roller booths, which went through the gateway, you know, coming into the town. Midtown businesses can display menus, venues, provide discounts to rail users, draw us consumers in. If a rail hub was created for Cornell Street lot, it would bring tourists to ride the train to Kingston Plaza in Midtown area. Residents of Midtown would be given the option of using the trail or the train, or you could even run a trolley from that area to Kingston Plaza. Again, provide choices to the Asian population and people with disabilities. There's a lot of people that can't utilize trails. I'm one of them. I look fine, I look healthy, but I'm not. I have a disability. There's a lot of people in this community that are like that. Some things I know viewers will probably think, well, Academy came up with a compromise and obtained a new vendor. I don't know how familiar you all are with this compromise, but if you're not, you really need to get into it. Because three things that scream out to me that it is, one, it's a five year lease. Insurance requirements are almost triple than what was required now, and they're eliminating possibility for any type of coverage by chopping or way out. And basically, what's going to happen is, no vendor is going to want to sign up for a five year lease that's going to have to truck in all their trains because there's no other way to get them here. So, I mean, it's just something to think about. Yeah, but I'll break this up now. Bottom line, this New York state is saturated with moss and trails all day. In reality, people are not going to come to Kingston and walk our trails. However, they were coming and will continue to do so to provide our historic train. Kingston officials need to realize this and jump on board to preserve this valuable resource. As one of the reports, my fair sight quoted, and I've read so many reports in the past two months between the county and the city of Kingston. I have this quote, but I'm not exactly sure what reporter came from, and I know it's from the state of Kingston, which stated, my quote, "No asset should be left unexplored in the search for economic anchors in Midtown." We need to come to the realization that Ulster County is known for its historic railway and just as Dutchess County is known for the roadway over the Hudson. Keeping our trails, all of them, not 11.0 miles being torn out around the show can or the mile and a half being torn out from Cornell to Plaza, all of them need to be preserved. It's vital, preserving them is a vital part for our future, both in tourism and economic growth. Please listen to all the people listening in county and to the citizens in the power to save our historic rails. I ask you to please work with county officials in coming up with a plan, retaining the Castle Mount railroad, who has provided train service for over 30 years throughout our county, who has brought countless numbers of tourists, tourists into our community, boosting our economy, especially in the city of Kingston. And we are going to take that data focus. So I don't know if you go down and see the trains, but I mean, our Midtown quite often is packed. Do not let the railroads, do not be railroaded by other public officials to let this opportunity of the taken rail service from Kingston to the way. And just one quick thing on the sales tax agreement, please, don't go down it tonight. There's too many ifs, as the last gentleman said, it's like, stop kicking the can. We got to do something now. The county, it just seems like they want full control. They're combining our, they're eliminating our tourism, they're combining our bus system. You know, they're going to, they want us to maintain the linear park forever. They're hoping about the Midtown Station. It just doesn't make sense. There's too many unanswered questions and too many loose ends. I just ask you, please review it more carefully. If you don't understand it, then find someone to explain it to you because it's not in the best interest for the city of Kingston to adopt when the county is walking. Thank you.
Next speaker, Adam Sawyer.
Mr. Chairman and common council members, Adam Sawyer would inform you that we are meeting with the Kingston City residents all day. The common council was given the task of crafting a gun law for the city of Kingston. Instead, he adopted a law for the city of Rochester, which is nine times our population and statistically one of the most violent cities by firearm in New York state. Rather than design to be a new law appropriate for our city, the council will adopt Rochester's law in its totality, including its overly intrusive governance and daily operation of shooting range facilities. This law will require the presence of a license or an authorized for hours of operation. Require a ratio of one million seconds per five shootings, which is not required by any federal or state agency, and would be unenforceable without all staffing to meet the satisfaction. What that means is if your business are, they're going to require you to have four more employees that surround all day just in case patrons come in, and you have to pay for the vendor workers to have the security. They also require a law book of the shooter's names, their signatures, agent's addresses, general descriptions of appearance, description of weapons used, including vacant serial number, when they shoot, the amount of caliber of ammunition used, downstate they call that gunfire, it sounds like something from a police career, and require unrestricted access to the shooting range and customer records during hours of operation, which you can go to written notice and give them. The council members have not performed any due diligence, which was evident by statements last night. If any committee member performed thorough research and still supports a lack of risk of the case of negligence, denial of statistics, a disrespect of committed gun owners, and you're afraid that Kingston will remain fiscally sound without a first whistle, business written.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jeff Kelly.
Peter Casey, Jeff Kelly, 164 Long Drive, 300 North Street, but I cannot guarantee any of them. Some of these issues probably, some of these issues probably should have gone through debate, but I went to the last appropriate committee meeting and got hung up on a red bullet issue, so that's not mine. In 2006, the Head Start Center was put under road permitting on former Biden. And since that time, there has been no focused signage on the roadway designated the area as school zone. So I think after 10 years of the lapse, it's probably pretty much time to get moving on that. I had an accident there a few years ago, and a police officer arrived, wasn't even aware it was a school zone. Well, there's no signs of it designated as a school zone. So how is anybody going to know unless they study that issue specifically? But it's high time to get that done. And actually, on the way to the meeting here tonight, I came within inches of getting hit by a careless driver going through that stop sign with a shooting cord. And yes, on the day you said the tape, the license plate number is there, it will be recorded. Okay, next thing is a speed bump. Well, I'm told, I'm going by the way the day is, I don't know if you've got any information, but anyway, that that's not really a speed bump, but the main purpose of that structure around, I call it, is to keep out of order from ten cord to the intersection of Flack and Shattuck. But it looks exactly like a speed bump. If you go over with a car, it acts like a speed bump. So if it's not a speed bump, perhaps... So if it's not a speed bump, perhaps, if you don't degrade at least the back of it down, so it's not so much of an issue. If you look at any professional road engineer website anywhere, they will tell you a speed bump in the intersection is not appropriate. That's also one of their features. Just to rotate on the bend on the drive, probably 150 feet or less in, mostly in the center of the road. Because year after year, tractor is going through there, snowplows are going through there, getting rocks that I have to clear out, because nobody else is doing it, the naked K H A is not doing it. Rocks that have to be put somewhere. The city's not doing it. Now we go into K H A. Well, we have trees, and leaves fall from trees, every one, much as like pollen. The last three years, leaves have not been picked up at the time of the crash. Why that is, I haven't been done. I recently had an issue where an elderly friend of mine lives in Colonial Edition had to take out a television set. It's old set, it weighed a ton of ham, had to go out. Well, who was gonna do it? Here's a couple things that were easy. I called the central office, spoke to a person who shouldn't be handling phones, number one. I won't mention that person's name. Spoke to her, gave me a home run around and then argued on the phone. I just wanted to know if it can be done or not. What are your suggestions? Simple. Can't get it. So I wound up asking a friend to help me. Against my advice, said, oh, we can pick it up and put it up on this cart, which we couldn't. Fortunately, there was a neighbor there to offer to help. That saved the day. What's going on with this speed bump? Aren't they paying for what they're worth they do? Latest victim of K H A administration is that children should not be on skateboards committed on the sidewalks and so forth. Well, what are they gonna do in the summertime? The Head Start Center took away their recreation area, which was a basketball court. So what are they gonna do? I looked on the city website and just say, oh, we have a program. The children, this year. Well, we have children. Now, I've noticed that the news department sends out good folks, I guess pretty much on a local basis, to go through that area. Go through, they ride through, they come out, and they pay no attention to the traffic port. Oftentimes, there's cars parked there illegally, and they pay no attention. All they have to do is look. Issue some tickets, do something. I had the great misfortune last year of having experience with civil service being referred to a job review. Being asked a medical question, that my first interview question. In this process, I followed the state and the E O S. They said, and then took, went through the process, the attorney for the respondent put into the state agency, read a statement about civil service law that was painfully false. I reported that to this civil service office, didn't even get a response. And people were trying to say, well, Kingston is not a joke. Oh, this is a joke. That's all I have to say.
Eric Roberts. Hello, my name is Eric Roberts, and the 14th and 25th Street, we continue to go. And they're coming to this city so much that people are surprised by the second boom. And because we did find a second boom, I do support the Rochester Amendment for the following reasons. One, I heard something like job creation. I don't see much of job creation in, you know, everywhere you go have a physical right, and I don't see how many of the local youth or people in the day will be on the job issue too, you have to have a lot of years to prove it in. That's the strong thing to work there, so I don't see much job requirement. The second reason I see, I heard before, is it was once a commercial center and now it became a residential center. Well, now, because it is residential, you can't move all the people out of the place and turn it back to a commercial residential, so it has to stay residential, and people have to live there. I mean, where you go from. And number three, I was thinking that, is because where I live in the gift deal, how would you like it if this person had a physical right to face the milk of where children go and play and have a good time, and then you hear, even if you mumble, they still go and hear the noise? And also, it is always a problem of competition, something's going to happen. When I went to my business training trip out there in the gift, it was, it was near a well-jungled, out of the middle of the milk, it was wilderness. And as I said, if you want to create a great job, a good education, and because I did learn how to use the system at that same training, but it was away from any, you know, any residential area at all, it was wilderness. And I feel more strongly than ever that if you want to create a very respite and have a warm-up for youth of Kingston, you should donate a place and turn it to like a greenhouse or a, you know, a grease center for people in the city that can enjoy, and it will be also saved to all by you and young people of your community. Thank you very much, your patient.
Thank you. Alex Dean.
Hi, my name is Alex Dean. I live at 753 Broadway, and I work at Six Action, which is a community organization that's located just across the street from the building of the proposed shooting range on 3rd and 5th. Each day, I see young children playing in the parking lot directly between these buildings. Every afternoon, there's a stream of students walking home from the high school outside our office window between the two buildings. I'm not presenting an argument about gun rights, because this isn't a debate about gun rights. People have every right to own guns and without question should have facilities where they can learn to use them safely. But there's no reason that this facility needs to be located in the center of what is truly a residential neighborhood, a school zone, in an area with a high concentration of community organizations and daycares, where children of all ages are spending time before and after school. Aside from the obvious safety concerns of bringing an unusual concentration of firearms into this neighborhood, there are the more assiduous environmental and health consequences of increasing the level of dangerous foods that we're already exposed to. There's an easy way for this council to make a responsible decision on this issue. Do you ask that you strongly consider the Rochester Amendment?